Good evening. It is Monday, June 12, 2023. This is the Guilford Board of Education. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we're going to take action on the minutes of the May 8, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the Monday, May 8 Board of Ed Education meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second? Any comments, corrections to these minutes? I was going to make one suggestion if I could. On page three, under the superintendent's report, if we could move just the heading 8.1, "Update on Open Choices", under that first paragraph, just because it... In the first paragraph, Dr. Freeman is referring to an earlier comment. It just looked a little confusing. Any other comments, corrections? All right. We have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Please say aye. Any opposed and one abstention? Okay. Thank you. Now, the May 22, 2023 workshop meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to these minutes? Okay. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Is that everybody? All right. Thank you. Public forum for topics on the board agenda. If anyone would like to address the board on topics on the board agenda, we invite you to come up to the podium. We ask you to keep it to three minutes, please. We will time it just so that it gives anyone else a chance who wants to speak, a chance to speak, and we just ask for your name and address, please.
My name is Danielle Scarpolino. I live on 405 Andrew Lane in Guilford. Book banning, a form of censorship, occurs when private individuals, government officials, or organizations remove books from libraries, school reading lists, or bookstore shelves because they object to their content, ideas, or themes. Book banning is the most widespread form of censorship in the United States, in which children's literature being the primary target. Censorship violates the First Amendment right to freedom of speech. However, some limitations are constitutionally permissible. Community standards may be taken into account when deciding if materials are subject to censor. The courts have told public officials at all levels that they may take community standards into account when deciding whether materials are obscene or pornographic and the subject to censor. They cannot, however, censor publications by generally accepted authors, such as Dr. Seuss, for example, in order to placate a small segment of the community. You see, in 1982, the Supreme Court ruled that public schools can bar books that are pervasively vulgar, but they cannot remove books simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books. This past March, Paul Freeman sent an email to the entire district entitled "Book Banning", and this is a quote: "As waves of book banning spread across the country, the demand to remove books from our shelves or restrict student access to books has come to Guilford." To correct the record, book banning actually came as early as 2021, when seven Dr. Seuss titles were physically removed from the school library shelves on the exact same day in one of Guilford's elementary schools. If I ran The Zoo, Scrambled Dags, Super, On Beyond Zebra, and To Think I Saw It on Mulberry Street, McGillicuddy's Pool, Six by Seuss, and A Hat Full of Seuss are no longer in circulation for the families and students at Melissa Jones Elementary School. In other words, they've been banned. And to be clear, these books were not stolen. They were not damaged. There was not one request for reconsideration filed. There was no documented public outrage. There was no drastic drop in their circulation numbers. And Dr. Seuss is a celebrated author who is widely accepted around the world. The reason for their banning can likely be explained by the national headlines that were occurring at the time. CNN, New York Times, The Washington Post, Education Weekly, Newsliya, National Geographics, Apple News, 1440 Daily Digest, all sources used by staff and administration and discovered through an FOIA request, reported that these books were considered to portray people in ways that are hurtful. Another source offered teacher training around this national discussion, stating that "the recognition that these books are not appropriate is just one action to address a renewed call for diversity and inclusion in schools." Another teacher assigned her students the Newsliya article entitled "Six Dr. Seuss Books Won't Be Published Anymore Because of Racist Images." This same teacher asked, "Should I, quote, 'use it or lose it'?"
Ms. Scarpolino, you're at three minutes. So I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. I have one small paragraph left.
That's fine. One paragraph is fine.
"To me, this suggests that the outrage associated with these texts has been intentionally manufactured, if not feigned, and it appears not to be of strictly local origin." That may sound familiar because that's something that Paul put in a letter to the entire district. An email sent to the entire AW Cox staff stated that "it's a well-documented concern that some images in Dr. Seuss's books are considered racist. This decision is whether to ignore this information or whether to share it as part of a diversity equity inclusion discussion."
Ms. Scarpolino, this is going beyond additional paragraphs. I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. There are people behind you who'd like to speak.
"I believe this highlights the difference between non-racist and anti-racist." That's a quote from one of your teachers. It seems like it's an administrator, since it went to the entire district school, I should say.
Thank you. We're now at four minutes. So I'm going to ask you to stop speaking and give someone else a chance to speak, please.
Okay. You asked me to wrap it up, so I'm wrapping it up. There's this much left.
No, please.
Okay. So there's no more can be said on this matter because of the time limit.
We are asking everyone to keep to three minutes, which we said in the beginning. There's someone behind you who'd like to speak. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak.
Okay. So I can finish up at the end with the questions?
If we have time, if we have time, yes, you can.
Oh, so you can only be here once? You can't come back?
Ms. Scarpolino, you know the rules, please.
I'm asking you questions. Excuse me?
Please. We've asked you to keep to three minutes. We just gave you four.
That's fine. But can I come back at the end for public questions?
At the end of the meeting, as you can.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Valerie Ferrucci, 1595 Little Meadow Road. I'm here to speak about the ACE's Open Choice Program that's being considered. I did send an email last week with more thoughts, but in the interest of time, I would like to bring up a couple of points. First off, I encourage the community to look up the current withdrawal of Woodbridge from the Open Choice Program. I am concerned with the potential lack of full reimbursement on children who may require special needs. Secondly, I feel this program can bring diversity to our student population. It can also provide opportunity to students who live in less robust school systems. However, with recent racial events in the high school and our community, I'm concerned in our foundation to support these children. Years ago, an equity audit was performed for the upper grades. I would like to request an update on the action items from this report, as well as a similar audit done for grades K to six. I also feel that integrating our equity liaison in these discussions would be helpful. In theory, I'm in support of open choice and appreciate the slow start that was discussed by Dr. Freeman, but I feel that a decision is not needed for this evening and requires some further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other people? Okay.
Bill Misono, Jefferson Drive. I'd like to follow up on the One Direction letter sent out to the entire district by Dr. Freeman. He states in the letter to date, "No one has filed a formal complaint or request that the Board of Education review any title." That was true. However, he does say that Guilford residents and GPS parents have raised concerns about books housed in Guilford High School Library and Adams Middle School. Local press has covered the request to remove books while some request that the books be removed from our stacks. Okay. He also put, "For adults in this community to personally attack teachers within our system because of professional decisions they have made is unacceptable. Please also let us agree that we will refrain from attacking educators personally and publicly. We must strive for that example, to be inclusive and welcoming with rich discourse that embraces diverse ideas." In putting out that, "our direction to the entire community", people were of the impression that parents who spoke that night were in favor of book banning. I've reviewed it. You can review it. No one asked for book banning. I specifically said I did not support book banning in any form. Because of Dr. Freeman's, I'll use the word careless instead of intentional wording, I've been called a book-burning Nazi. My son has been approached in school. He's had students talking behind his back, saying how his father is interested in removing alt books from the library, banning them, and then naming the school after himself. So this is the kind of rhetoric we get when you don't think carefully about what you're putting out. If you have a problem with individuals, you should state that. But be clear, no one that night said anything, but it's come back on us. And you all should have been aware. I've cautioned you in the past. To think about what you do before you do it. So much hate was brought down on those families because of this "our direction" letter, when not one of us supports banning of books. So make it clear. There should be an apology issued on that to all of those parents. And I'll end it there. I'll let you decide whether or not you think that was the proper thing to do.
Any other members of the public want to speak?
Okay. Before we move on, I'll just note that these were comments related to topics on the agenda. There is, under the superintendent's report, 8.3, "Book Challenges", so we'll hold a discussion at that point. Under the board agenda, 9.5, "Act On", we will be holding a discussion and possibly considering a discussion around open choice. All right. So now we're going to move on to review and approval of expenditures for the month. Ms. Scarpolino?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the expenditures for the month of May 2023 This represents 86.47% of this year's budget. We did receive a number of payments in revenue totaling $233,740.24. These included Medicaid, pre-K tuition, and also the excess cost grant for special ed. Unfortunately, this was lower than expected. We were expecting about $85,000, and it came in somewhere around 70...
Percent.
Seventy percent?
Eighty-five percent of our cost.
Eighty-five percent.
Okay. Okay. But it was lower than expected.
Correct.
The takeaway here is that everything is more expensive, is the big takeaway here. But we are expecting some money back in terms of the technology lease that will help with the higher equipment line. We are expecting two checks to come back as it relates to new truck that was purchased. That was it?
Yeah.
Wasn't a lot to really...
No, this is great. Right. So the excess cost grant, unfortunately, our experience has been that it has never been funded at 100%. In the last couple of years, I'm looking at Mrs. Trudeau as I speak, it's been inching past 70%, which has been quite exciting. And I think the hope, as Mrs. Baldwin mentioned, was that it would be, it was looking like it would be, and we were told it might be, around 85%. So it was down what we expected, at 73.7%. I do want to give great credit to Mrs. Trudeau and her staff. She's very careful in her budgeting every year. So this is not representing for us... It represents a loss from the state. It will not negatively impact our budgeting.
Dr. Bell Stracey, if I may, just to be really clear, we never budget for the full 100% reimbursement from the state. And so while 85% of our reimbursable expenses would have been great, we began this year budgeting for an anticipated approximately 70%. So we anticipated this number, and even though it's disappointing, it still falls within the budget parameters that we had established at the beginning of this year. It does not leave us in trouble, is the point that I'd like to make.
Thank you.
Other comments? The Board of Ed had an operations committee meeting immediately before this and discussed the finances and the warrants in more detail. But I don't know if anyone else had any other questions or comments? All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve the May 2023 financial reports for fiscal year 2022-23.
So moved. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that everyone? That's it? Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Communications. Does anyone on the board have communications they received that they wanted to discuss?
I do. I had a verbal communication at a picnic thing last weekend. There are two new families in Guilford, and they both thanked, you know, us collectively. They moved here specifically because of the school system. So it was really nice to hear.
Oh, that's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
And we had emails regarding the choice program that we've heard about tonight and questions concerning diversity, the diversity agenda that we have.
Right.
Opportunities to discuss that later tonight.
Okay. Yeah. Terrific. Other communications?
I have a personal communication.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say thank you all, as well as my teachers and administrators that I've had the pleasure to get to know for my past 13 years at Guilford Public Schools. Since my first Board of Education meeting last year, you guys have made me feel welcome and respected, and I appreciate you all treating me as a peer rather than a teenager or someone younger than all of you. I speak for myself when I say this, that being raised in Guilford and going through our school system has provided me with skills that I will carry with me throughout my collegiate years, as well as my adult life. I would like to give a special shout-out to all the teachers I had, as well as counselors and social workers who have made a mark in my life, from creating a great relationship as early as kindergarten with my teachers to being able to count on my teachers and counselors for support. I have nothing but positive things to say about my experience. My wish is that Guilford stays true to this and that kids either stepping up to Baldwin, Adams, or the high school, or even heading to elementary school will have the same positive experience, if not better, than I had. Again, thank you all, and I appreciate all the things that you guys do.
That was lovely. Thank you. It's been such a pleasure. Any other communications? All right. Student representatives, I know you probably have some reports. I'm going to have you do that first, and then we have a recognition to do ourselves. So I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Okay. So I can go first. At Melissa Jones, they had their field day... Actually, at both Melissa Jones and Guilford Lakes, they had their field day. Did a lot of the traditional activities. They also both had inflatable obstacle courses, some sort of DJ tunes, and I saw lots of pictures of very, very wet kids. So that looked fun. At Melissa Jones, there was a couple of field trips. Second graders went to the Meeks Point Nature Center at Hammond Asse. Third graders came to the high school... Actually, third graders across all the schools came to the high school to watch a music performance of Peter and the Wolf. Fourth graders went to one of the Griswold museums, or to the Griswold Museum. And third and fourth graders also had their music performance featuring a collection of music from different cultures. Fourth graders across all of those schools had their early Guilford Day, where they got all dressed up and then visited the Guilford Keeping Society. And then at Guilford Lakes, third graders also went to the Eli Whitney Museum, where they built models of the solar system to complement the unit that they're learning about. Second graders toured the Thimble Islands by boat. So there's a lot of people in... There was a rain ponchos, all getting all misted around on the boat. And then they also had a bike, walk, bus, or car school day, where people came in to try to talk, like thinking about environmental concerns. First graders made a whole bunch of signs of animals as part of their animal research unit, and they put on a small fair to show all that they had learned. And then late in May, there was... Wait. Late in May, Guilford Lakes had Recognize World Culture Day, so they participated in a series of activities, and students wore clothing that represented their own cultures.
So at AW Cox, the fourth graders have had many fun events to wrap up their school year. They enjoyed their early Guilford Days experience. They will be having their stepping-up ceremony this week, as well as their end-of-year picnic, and they have had the opportunity to meet up with staff and students from Baldwin as they prepare for the transition to middle school. They had field day activities, as did the other elementary schools, for all students on June 1. The music teacher, Mr. Kleiner, has had musical performances for all grade levels, where families were able to come and see the interactive music performances. Both Mrs. Gilhouse, who's the art teacher, and Mr. Kleiner worked together and hosted an arts night, where music and art was spread all around the AW Cox community. Teachers have been hosting end-of-year celebrations of learning. Just to name a few examples, there were presentations of student-made shelters, tree unit writing, ocean animals research projects, and writing celebrations. Ms. Hammond also noted that, quote, "It has been an exciting year, and it's been fun to watch all of our students grow so much, wishing everyone a safe and restful summer." As for Adams Middle School, the music groups just went to, like, a performance where they scored exceptionally well. Spring sports events ended well in their track, and track and field team went to the MS State Championships. The girls' track and field team took second place overall in the state. Spring concerts were wonderful. In the eighth-grade band concert, the band performed an original composition, which I thought was really cool. It was written by an eighth-grade band student, Micah Lim. And then the new class of National Junior Honor Society students were inducted at the end of May, new additions to supporting students in their transitions between schools. Baldwin sixth-grade students have met up with teachers from Adams, and they had tours for Adams. And then the eighth graders are visiting, or have visited the high school and got to meet with some students to discuss our programs. The eighth-grade students had their end-of-year dance, which was last Friday, and they had a blast playing volleyball and dancing. Seventh-grade students are going on field trips to Jacob's Beach, and eighth-grade students will be going on a field trip to Hammond Asse. And then the eighth-grade promotion will be held this Friday at the high school. As for GHS, the seniors have had a month full of activities. We went to Qasi for our senior outing. We had our senior breakfast and senior showcase, our awards night, and scholarship night. The National Honor Society and World Language Honor Society held their inductions. I would like to note that the Spanish Honor Society has made a donation to Arte Incorporated, which is an organization dedicated to, quote, "youth enrichment and education." Their mission is to promote Latino art, culture, and education. Drawz lacrosse won states yesterday, and baseball was runner-ups in their finals on Saturday.
Moving on to Baldwin, performance music is valued at Baldwin, where each student is required to participate in either the band, orchestra, or chorus. In addition to exposure to performance music, the experience allows students to contribute to a group that is greater than themselves. Over the last three weeks, each of the performance music groups held in-person concerts. Each group performed for the school during the day and in the evening for family and friends. The quality of the music performances continues to impress. Baldwin is proud to be the beginning of a rich tradition of music in Guilford Public Schools. The Baldwin Bonanza was held on June 8. This is a sixth-grade-only event with fun outdoor activities held right on the grounds of VMS. The physical education department organizes the day of events in partnership with classroom teachers and with the support of the PTO. The day was a great opportunity for the sixth graders to make happy memories. Each year, students are invited to create a Baldwin Middle School flag that represents the school community. One flag design is chosen to represent the school and is displayed with pass-winding designs on the wall of flags in the cafeteria. This year, there were 28 designs entered, and the winning flag design will be announced on flying day, June 14. Stepping Up Day is the day the sixth-grade students are recognized as they prepare to step up to Adams Middle School as seventh graders. The ceremony is going to take place in the Baldwin Gym on Thursday, the 15th, the whole Baldwin Middle School community wishes everyone a wonderful summer. Onto Calvin Lee. As part of Teacher Appreciation Week, a Calvin Lee parent and massage therapist came in and gave teachers chair massages over a two-day period. This helped them physically reduce tension and decrease stress in their lives. They were very grateful. Grade four students attended early Guilford Day on Monday. Students visited the Highland Museum and Griswold House and learned about how people lived during colonial times. Fourth graders learned about knot tying, tinsmithing, an herb kitchen, bookbinding, colonial games, and blacksmithing. Field Day, like other elementary schools, on June 2 was a tremendous success. Henry Prescott III, the physical education teacher, organized a wonderful day of games based on student choices made by the fourth graders. Activities like tug-of-war, a water slide, a downsy house, basketball, and a teacher dunk tank, if that was a favorite. Students had a beautiful day to play, and over 140 volunteers participated. It's wonderful to see students and families together again at school events. A big thanks to Mr. Prescott for organizing the great event and to all volunteers. The day ended with the Guilford Fire Department offering a giant sprinkler to the sun source to students. Here at GHS, the senior events are lots of fun. More field trips. There was a field trip for every physics class to lay compounds. Had a great time on that. I went on my first roller coaster personally. The sports are wrapping up. I know for the track team, there were two school records this year, one on the boys' side, one on the girls' side, Joshua Chen in the 400 and Aron Clarigan. I know the Environmental Club is having a great time. They were selling plants in the lunchways yesterday, raising awareness for the environment. And the capstone projects around are up and running. My whole count fast went to C. One of our fellow students was presenting an AI program he had made by himself. Very impressive, very confusing, too. It was very enjoyable.
Thank you. There is a lot going on in Guilford Public Schools. It's wonderful. So I get the opportunity to stand up and thank Ruby for her contributions to the Board of Education over the last two years. Our student representatives serve an important role, not just in coming to us every month and reporting out on all that's going on in the schools, but at various times have shared with us their feelings about things that are happening. And it's just, they're a really important part of what we do, keep us informed in the nitty-gritty and the details of what's going on in our schools. And in many cases, we get opportunities to see these students at other events, at other school events throughout the year. So it's really a joy. This is... I'm going to stand up, and I'm going to ask Ruby to stand up. Come on over here so they can get you on camera. So this is a certificate of recognition. Ruby C. Espajo is recognized with special thanks and appreciation for her participation as a student representative on the Guilford Board of Education, June 12, 2023. This comes also with a gift inside here.
Thank you.
So I'm giving both of these two. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank our other two student representatives. I hope you both have a wonderful summer, and I hope we're seeing you back here next year. You are invited back, for sure. And thank you for all your contributions. As you know, you are welcome to stay, and you are also welcome to leave if you have other things to do tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great summer.
You, too.
You, too. Enjoy it.
And Ruby will see you on Friday. And Ruby will see you on Friday. All right, um, superintendent's report. Dr. Freeman, I turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. And to get us started, I am going to invite Dr. Goss to give us the update on summer programming.
Absolutely. So this summer, we will have three different, um, types of learning, two of them for students and one for teachers. The first one is Extended School Year Program. That is going to serve about a hundred students. It'll be July 5th to August 10th. Um, those will be students from preschool to age twenty-two, and it, they'll be working on their skill acquisition per their I E Ps. So that is, um, that's how students are invited to that program. Summer Learning Pathways is actually open to all of our students who are entering kindergarten through entering eleventh grade. Um, they, that prep, that program will go, um, from July 5th to July 27th. And we have about two hundred, um, students enrolled this year. That's our largest number ever. And we have thirteen different pathways, several sections of a couple of those pathways running. Um, but the program's actually gotten quite large. Uh, and some of those programs, for instance, kindergartners can, um, be part of space travel to Mars or designing a robot. Uh, one of our really, um, popular pathways is called Creature Power, and kids think about what types of, um, adaptations animals have that enable them to sort of have superpowers. Um, and all the way through eleventh grade with Ted Talks for middle and high schoolers and, uh, uh, an interesting course that I learned about called Forensic Etymology. So I'm excited to hear what that, what that looks like this summer. And then we also have learning pathways for our adult learners. Um, we have a couple of days, I think it's three days at the end of August, and we have sort of a morning session and an afternoon session, and several of the sessions repeat so that people could take multiple pathways. Um, we have room for about seventy teachers to participate, uh, open to all G P S faculty. And right now, we have ten different sessions running, many of which are, are based on a book called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. We actually have three sessions of that, sort of an introduction, Toolkit One and Toolkit Two. Um, and we also have a Building Thinking Classrooms for teachers of subjects other than mathematics, so sort of beginning to look at that. A session on formative assessment, sessions on estimation and math rules in the elementary classroom. The second session of morphology, so we did morphology one before, this is morphology two. And what's really exciting is that we see that teachers, some new teachers join us each time and some fall off and come back other times, but we have some sort of repeat folks who really are building on the learning that they've done in previous sessions. So that builds on not only work that was done in the fall and last summer, but, uh, work that was done this spring as well. So we've been fortunate to run several sessions.
That's terrific. Um, I'm remembering a hundred, a hundred and sixty students last year? I mean, that's a...
It was about a hundred and sixty, yes, yeah, yeah.
So now over two hundred. That's really fabulous.
Closer to a hundred prior to that, so...
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it just is, is kind of left up in numbers.
Growing and growing. I think a little bit of that may be the, the cooperation with, um, Guilford Park and Rec.
Correct.
Um, so we're able to bus students to their program for the afternoon. And obviously, that piece is limited, but I think that's really helpful that it makes a full day for many parents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Remind me, that's all happening here at the high school?
Actually, yes. Um, Extended School Year will be happening at Lakes. Summer Pathways will be happening here.
Okay.
Are there questions about that? That's terrific. That's exciting. Great. Thank you.
Really exciting summer opportunities. I am also excited to inform the board tonight um, that in a first time since pre-pandemic, uh, we have approved two international exchange students to be joining us here at the high school next year. Um, we will be hosting, uh, and two families from Guilford have stepped up to host these students, and they will be joining us in the high school. Uh, we will be, uh, hosting a student from Italy next year, uh, who will likely be placed in twelfth grade classes. And we will be hosting a student from France next year, who will very likely be placed in eleventh grade classes. Both students are supported or sponsored by state-approved organizations with whom we have worked in the past. Uh, we are excited to be sharing these opportunities. You have a statement in your board packet tonight that includes a little bit more information about each of those placements. Um, but we really appreciate families in the community making these opportunities available, and we're happy to be able to offer these opportunities. Once again, um, gives all of, uh, our students who have a chance to interact with these visitors an opportunity to, to learn, so we're excited.
That's great.
And then I also wanted to bring to the board's attention that, um, in the past several weeks, we have received at this time five properly submitted book challenges. I believe the board members saw copies of those book challenges, but tonight I want to formally apprise you of those. Uh, the books that are being challenged under policy, uh, at the high school housed in the Guilford Library are the books Flamer and Lawn Boy. Uh, housed in the Adams Library are the books It's Perfectly Normal and Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. And again, back here at the high school, uh, a book that is used in an A P English class, the title is The Bluest Eye. So again, under policy, any community member has the right to challenge a book and ask that the board review that title. Um, what I am proposing, um, considering, um, the calendar, we've got five days of school left, and the number of books that are here, is that I will schedule, um, an opportunity for the board to discuss and dispose of these, um, at your September meeting. So that will give the board members the summer to, um, review and familiarize yourself with all five titles. It will give me time to, as policy requires, speak to the, the appropriate professional staff who were involved in selecting those titles. So at your meeting, I can give you a rationale and an explanation as to the book's, um, presence in our, either our library or in our curriculum. Um, I will invite those professional individuals to be at the meeting with you. Board can enter into conversation. I expect that I'll be able to answer most of your questions. Dr. Goss will be part of the conversation. And I expect, again, that either the library media specialists, classroom teachers, or department chairs involved in selecting those texts will be available to answer your questions as well. Again, under policy, um, a community member has asked the board to review each of those texts and make a determination as to whether or not they should appropriately remain in those library or classroom collections. Um, I think that September is reasonable time. There's only five days of this school year remaining. Gives you time to do your homework and be prepared to engage in that conversation at our September meeting.
Um, so, um, at this time, one is something that, um, Dr. Freeman and I discussed. Um, if anyone needs any of these books, um, um, we have The Bluest Eye. Uh, because it is part of the A P English class, we have...
We have multiple copies available of that text.
In the district. Um, some of us have copies of various other books, but if you would, um, contact me and let me know, um, that you need a copy of a book.
We'll make any or all five of those titles available to any board member who needs assistance in securing those board, those titles. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, the point is you're not expected to purchase all of these books. Um, we should, um, be able to, to get access to, um, to them in a variety of ways.
Is this request from five different people or? No, it's from one individual in the community.
Um, any questions about that process? Um, so we'll come back then in, um, in September, um, having had a chance to review them, and then we'll...
And I'll have a report and a recommendation on each individual title for you.
One book at a time.
Correct.
I'm sorry, and was that at a typical board meeting or that would be a special meeting convened?
That's a good question. It can go any way that we choose, so we can take a look at our regular meeting agenda. We can choose to schedule it for the workshop in September, or we can convene a special meeting. It would more typically fall to a workshop meeting where there's more lengthy conversations about individual topics. Um, but again, I think September is a reasonable timeframe for that.
Okay.
And Dr. Ballast Tracy and I will confirm the, the agenda for that. And for the community, that meeting will be posted publicly as our all-board meeting, so anybody who's interested will have the opportunity to attend that public conversation.
Okay. Any questions on that topic?
That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. All right, um, nine point one is a presentation of CAE student awards. Um, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, every year, um, for high schools across the state, um, ask, um, the administration to identify two students, um, that, uh, they would like to, um, identify as worthy of a CAE award. Um, and so I have the opportunity, um, to present, um, two awards to two of our students tonight. So I'm gonna come up here, and when I call your name, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the podium. Um, Hannah Contessa. Hannah, come on up. How are you? Good. I'm gonna embarrass you for a second. Sorry, because I get to read this. Um, Hannah is a strong leader, both within Guilford High School and in the community at large. She has served as one of our senior class presidents. As a leader, she focuses her efforts on allowing everyone's voice to be heard, and through flexibility, follow-through, and hard work, serves as an excellent facilitator and collaborator. She has served as a peer minister at St. George's Catholic Church and enjoys teaching dance to younger students. She's an accomplished dancer, and her four years at Guilford High School has contributed to the theater arts program. She's particularly proud of her work helping with choreography and costumes in Guilford High School productions. So Hannah, this is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education awards this Student Leadership Award to Hannah Contessa, Guilford High School, for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. Awarded this twelfth day of April. This is when it was awarded. This is obviously not the twelfth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. So I want to hand you this. There is a letter from CAE inside, a small gift as well. And I want to thank you so much for all that you've done to contribute to our school community. Congratulations. And congratulations to your family who is here. Um, next, uh, Isaac Ott Hill, please. Isaac, how are you? Good. Isaac is a positive role model and leader in our school. He has served as the president of the Spanish Honor Society, an athlete, and an excellent student. He has volunteered in the First Congressional Church as a Sunday School teacher and taken active leadership roles in Pilgrim Fellowship, a non-sectarian youth leadership and service program in town. In addition, Isaac is an entrepreneur who has built his own landscaping and yard maintenance buil- business for elderly people in the community. He has grown his business to thirty clients in the past two years. Likewise, let me read this. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education awards a Student Leadership Award to Isaac Ott Hill, Guilford High School, for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. This, a gift inside here, and our great thanks for all the ways you've contributed to our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Congratulations also to your family who is here with you.
Katie.
Yes.
Point of personal privilege?
Yes, please go ahead.
I would like to also congratulate, uh, Hannah Contessa for, uh, she held a ballet recital for the last weekend. I know, because my daughters are, were part of it, and so are many, many Guilford, uh, residents. Um, so congrats. It was an amazing performance.
Wonderful. All right. Um, we're now going on to nine point two, which is to act on personal items. We have the opportunity to ratify the appointment of a number of new teachers who will be coming into the district. Please, uh, we are being asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Kayla Stevens, a one-point-oh F T E Guilford High School Special Education Teacher. Lauren Golden, one-point-oh F T E Adams Middle School Science Teacher. Patrick Loa- Loakano, I'm sure I mispronounced that. My apologies to him. Um, full-time Adams Middle School Technology Education Teacher. Kaitlin Romeo, uh, full-time Cox Elementary School Special Education Teacher. Maria Tori- Toriago, Adams Middle School Full-Time Science Teacher. Christopher Romeo, full-time Baldwin Middle School Special Education Teacher. And Claire Gravina, full-time Lakes Elementary School Speech Language Pathologist. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of these seven teachers? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful.
Dr. Ballast, appreciate it.
That's great. Seven new people.
If I may, I, I also just want to note, um, that these seven hires, the, the first and, and what will be more as we prepare for next school year, um, do sort of illustrates the, the changing landscape that we're seeing, uh, both the effects of the teacher shortage as well as efforts that have been made in the Human Resources Office. Uh, of those seven teachers, four of them have been hired from out of state, um, from Texas, Colorado, and Oregon.
Wow.
Yes, so, uh, we've been reaching out much more broadly with our efforts to, to recruit and attract talent. Um, and the things we've learned about Zoom in the last few years have facilitated some of our interviewing. And it's, it's interesting to see how while the Connecticut pool is shrinking, and we are seeing the effects of that, that we've had opportunities to, to reach out and hire from further afield than we would have had in past years. And so I want to thank Mr. Bowden in the H R office and the principals for their, um, persistence in finding and, and securing these candidates as we move forward.
Excellent.
Seeing all these special education programs and science in two areas of severe deficit is incredible.
We started early and really focused. The principals and their teams at the buildings have been doing a really great job.
That's terrific. Thank you. That's great. Um, all right, nine point three is to approve a donation of one thousand fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents from the Guilford Dugout Club for the purchase of various equipment for the baseball team. Um, in the letter, the equipment is identified as a tripod, rake, eight bags of field surface, iPad case workout balls, indoor workout balls, a radar gun, and a bat rake. Um, so a lot of, uh, equipment for, um, for the team from the Guilford Dugout Club. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Um, and a thank you certainly to the Guilford, uh, Dugout Club for your, um, support of our student athletes. Such an important, um, uh, way that, that you contribute. Thank you. Okay, uh, nine point four is to act on the custodial supply bid. We do this every year. Um, we are being asked to approve, um, the bid for a number of custodial supplies. So, um, the bid contains fifty-nine items used by maintenance staff during the year. Uh, eight vendors came and, um, put in bids for each item. Uh, four vendors, um, were identified as the lowest bidders for these items. Um, K and S Distributors was the low bidder for, for sixteen items. Central Poly was the low bidder for two items. Hilliard Rovik was the low bidder for two items. Uh, W B Mason was the low bidder for thirty-six items. Um, so we are being asked to approve the custodial supply bid as it was distributed among the lowest bidders. Is there a motion to approve, um, this approach?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And everybody. Great. All right. Uh, so nine point five is to act on participation in open choice for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, we did want to take a little time, um, first, um, to just ask Dr. Freeman if you could. I think, um, we've had a couple of emails over the last several days, um, from members of the public asking for a little more detail, I think, on the open choice program. We as a Board of Ed, um, have had several opportunities over the last couple of months uh, to hear about and discuss this open program, uh, open choice program. We had, um, people from the open choice program come to one of our board meetings, um, a couple of months ago and talk in some detail. Um, our own Mr. Grimm, um, uh, who, um, used to be a principal here and who now, uh, works and is connected with this program is, is here as well. Um, I imagine... I imagine if we had some questions, could we call on you? He's nodding. Wonderful, thank you. But I wanted to turn to you, Dr. Freeman, because I know there have been some questions circling.
Yes.
And it would be helpful to hear from you a little more if you could.
Oh, I'm happy to. So I'd like to start by inviting Mr. Grimm and Mr. Scanziano to come join us at the table, if I may. And then I'll start by responding to those questions that we've received in email, and I think open it up to a broader conversation with the board members and with, and with Mr. Grimm and Mr. Scanziano. I really appreciate the emails that have come in. I believe that I have seen four or five emails that have come in over the last several days. And I think the, the questions that I, I guess the way that I would summarize the concerns is that I think some of the questions that have been raised, some of the wonderings that I read in those emails, were asking, were we ready to be able to properly support students that were intentionally inviting from New Haven to come join us in our public schools? Remember, the open choice program is a statewide program with the express intent of reducing racial isolation in schools. And so while there's no racial requirement for the students from New Haven who might choose to participate, there's an expectation that we'd be, that we'd be increasing the percentage of students who may be Black, African-American, Hispanic, who would be joining our school population through that program. The second concern that I've heard raised was about special education costs, how those are distributed between Guilford and New Haven, and really specifically about the most recent experience that Woodbridge has experienced. And while Woodbridge has not withdrawn from the program, they are still an active participant in open choice through ACES. They didn't accept any students in this year's kindergarten cohort. And so I'm happy to speak to those. And when the questions began coming in, Mr. Grimm and I had a conversation, Mr. Scanziano and I have talked, and in the last several days, I have been in conversation with the superintendent at Woodbridge, the superintendent in Cheshire, which is one of the longest participating and has the highest numbers of students in the ACES program. And I know that Mr. Scanziano today spoke to the Special Education Director in North Branford, who is a participating program as well. So let me start by taking that first question. What continued progress have we made around our equity and social justice work? And do we feel ready to support students who we would be inviting in from Guilford Public, into Guilford Public Schools? You heard tonight, there were questions about, have we continued the work that Dr. Seiler began a number of years ago? So the quick answer is yes, we have continued to do that work, and we have continued to focus on that work. Through school year 21-22, Dr. Seiler from St. Joseph's University continued working with our instructional coach cohort. He was taking the information that he gleaned from that self-study conducted with fifth through 12th grade teachers, and he was meeting with our classroom teachers, pre-K through, our classroom instructional coaches, the pre-K through 12th. It wasn't just focused on the secondary level. And he was working with those instructional coaches about culturally responsive and sustaining instructional practices. How do classroom teachers make classrooms safe and, and places of belonging for all students, through curricular selections, through material selections, primarily through the environment that they create and through the instructional practices in which they engage? And so Dr. Seiler continued that work all through 21-22. Additionally, I think that this Board of Education deserves credit because in June of that same school year, this board revisited our instructional policy around controversial issues and recommitted to the, to the policy that states that students need to be wrestling with big, important, and sometimes controversial ideas in classrooms, that that in fact is the best way that students learn. And this board will recall that as we worked on that policy, we had teachers who came and joined those conversations, particularly teachers from the English Language Arts Departments, the Social Studies Departments, and the Health and PE Department, who were part of those conversations as you reviewed that policy. As we moved into this current year, school year 22-23, the school year started with a summer administrative retreat where the leadership team worked with both Dr. Seiler and Dr. Harrison. Dr. Seiler again helped us look at ideas around culturally sustaining and responsive instructional practices, and specifically tied it to that policy that you, the board, had just approved and revised. Dr. Harrison worked with us around that idea of creating environments in which teachers can then create classrooms where all students feel that they can belong. We also talked quite a bit about how we respond to uncomfortable incidences in our community, like racially charged incidents that occur between or among students, and how we respond, how we react to those. We talked a lot with the principals about how you write and how you share a communication with the larger parent community when something has happened in school, and when hurtful or harmful or hateful language has been part of that incident. In August, at our convocation, we were joined by Dr. Mira Levinson from Harvard. Mira Levinson works primarily in the Ed Ethics Program at Harvard University. She and a number of colleagues were here. And in something that we don't often do, we spent a good chunk of that convocation morning with Mira talking to us about controversial issues in the classrooms, and specifically how teachers can be confident responding when those topics sort of present themselves in a classroom in a way that was unplanned. A news event happens the night before, and the next morning, we're all trying to respond to it as adults with students who come in and have questions. A, a, in a hybrid lesson where students are learning from home and at school, a student in one home has an image in the background that another parent finds troubling, and we have to navigate those waters between students and families, and about how to do that. Mira had that conversation, and then specifically worked with our staff and put our staff into small groups, talking about really difficult questions, but questions that are opened and closed. I don't think in the United States today, we continue to debate about whether or not women should be able to vote. But that was an open political debate that at one time was alive and real and open question, and people had differing opinions on that question. Our society today is full of questions that are open and real and have two sides, and people debate those two sides, and people of good intention have different opinions about those. That's a difficult position for a classroom teacher to be placed in. And so Mira worked with our staff and helped us think through how you respond in those situations. In a really exciting day, on our November Professional Development Day, we had the group from Harvard back, and in a really, I think, in a really, in a real neat piece of design, we had 39 facilitators from Harvard University who were able to work with our teachers in Guilford Public Schools that day, primarily virtually. But our teachers on that day in November each participated in one of two case studies that they had read, and they were taken through those cases by skilled facilitators, safe fictionalized events where something of that nature occurs, and the adults are able to talk about how you respond in those situations. Because the fact is, no curriculum can be so detailed or so forward-looking to anticipate all of those. Teachers were able to work through those settings in the morning with support from Harvard, and then in the afternoon, go back to their professional learning communities, the real people that they work with here in Guilford every day, and unpack those experiences with colleagues with whom they work. Just last month, in May, we had, two of the team from Harvard was back working with our leadership team. And as a leadership team, we were talking about, what are the next steps that we need to design? How do we go from those experiences this year? How do we continue to support teachers and help them to create the classroom environments that they need to create if they're going to live up to the policy that this board reauthorized and revised back last June? We've got a follow-up meeting. I think that Dr. Goss and I just scheduled a follow-up meeting where the next step is to plan our coaches and administrators in district to be the facilitators of those case studies so that we can continue using those tools right in the classroom. Now, as we plan into next year, and as we look at moving that forward, Dr. Goss and I met with Dr. Harrison last year. Dr. Harrison has been working in the district for two years now as the Family Equity Liaison. Next year, we will be leaning on Dr. Harrison more overtly to continue that classroom-level work and support with the teachers. So remember, if the board approves my recommendation tonight to begin open choice, it would be for September of '24, not this coming September of '23. But beginning this September of '23, building on the work that I've just described, Dr. Harrison will be working with all staff members during convocation, a brief portion of convocation, but setting an umbrella that will cover a conversation moving forward about belonging, about how do we ensure that our classrooms are spaces where every child knows and feels that they belong? He will be using the first three early release days in our calendar, so you know that roughly one Wednesday a month, students are sent home early, so staff have extended learning opportunities. The first three of the early release days this year fall in September, October, and January. Dr. Harrison will be using each of those three early release days to continue working on that theme with teachers. He will be bringing the group back together on March 8th, which is a full-day professional development release day, and that full day will be dedicated. So we started early this year with a day in November, and next year, we'll be wrapping up with a day in March where we're really focusing on those belonging environments that we create, on those safe and brave classrooms that the team from Harvard talks about. In addition to that, while Dr. Harrison will be rolling that out, our instructional coaches and administrators will have had this summer training around facilitation, and we will be able to be using the case studies that Harvard has created in PLC meetings or faculty meetings, so that while they're working on the technical or the technique side with Dr. Harrison, they've got opportunities in small groups with the people they work with every day to practice in those fictionalized, safe case studies. And then finally, and most specifically as it applies to the open choice, we'll be building a calendar around release time and partnering with other districts who have successfully been participating in open choice for years. So specifically, we want to look at neighbors like Branford and North Branford, but we also want to look at districts like South Windsor. South Windsor, there's a really exciting administrator for diversity, equity, inclusion, who's been doing some really interesting work around how to support the families as well as the students who choose to be part of our Guilford School Community. We'll be finding opportunities for elementary teachers who are going to be directly receiving those open choice students in '24 to visit schools and classrooms where that's been going on for years, if not decades, and we'll find opportunities to bring teachers from those communities into Guilford, whether it's virtually or in person, to speak with larger groups of teachers. But we're really targeting the open choice as a structure, as well as continuing the work around equity and social justice and belonging that we've been talking about in Guilford for years now. So I know that our focus, our public focus has shifted in the past couple of years to be talking about the science of reading, or phonics that we've been building into the classrooms, or the thinking classrooms, but that doesn't mean that we've stopped doing the work around equity to make sure that, again, classrooms are places where students can be safe and brave in wrestling with important, even controversial ideas that make people uncomfortable, and places where every child knows and feels that they belong in those settings. And so we're going to continue that work. I really appreciate the questions because it led me to recognize how little we've been talking about this publicly. Though I appreciate people saying, are we ready? But I'm really excited to say that I believe we are and will be ready for September of '24 to invite students into our community in this way. And I'll pause there before I start talking about Woodbridge, because I'll go on just as long about Woodbridge.
I want to give your colleagues an opportunity to ask questions or make comments, or, go ahead.
Dr. Freeman, did you flush out the, I mean, you probably mentioned this, but just flush out the, the starting point would be first grade?
Yeah, I'm happy to mention that again, so thank you. So the plan for September of '24 is that we would invite one cohort of first-grade students only. First grade is a really intentional decision. Our students are local students in Guilford, with Guilford Addresses enrolling kindergarten. And we never really have a handle on, on how many students are going to enroll, or how those students are going to be distributed across the schools. It's not unusual for us to be in situations where kindergartens in one community might be at 16 or 17 or 18 students, and just on the other side of town, in another neighborhood school, the kindergarten classes are at 12. So the logic of inviting, the logic of enrolling kindergarten students without choice is because we will therefore be establishing a staffing level based on Guilford residents who enroll in kindergarten, and we will establish those kindergarten class sizes. The seats that we offer in open choice are available seats only that will not have an impact on staffing or cost here in the Guilford Public Schools. So by offering them in first grade, we will be able to look at our kindergarten enrollment, see that in one neighborhood, the kindergarten classes are sitting at 17 and 18. We're not going to offer seats in those kindergartens. But on the other side of school, three kindergarten sections are sitting at 12s. We could offer three or even six open choice seats in that school, and the kindergarten classes would still only move up to 16s, which is a really, it's a really, it's a really good number, and it's a low number compared to what you would see if you looked at other DIRDB districts across. So it allows us to ensure that we're not adding cost or expense to the budget, and it allows us to look that year in advance. So when we look to offer seats in September of '24, we'll be talking about a total number of maybe six or seven students that we're inviting in across the four elementary schools. We will make sure that we do not offer any singleton seats in any elementary school. We're not going to invite one first grader from New Haven to come and be the only student in that situation in a school. It'll always be at least in pairs, if not in threes, so that students come in with somebody else who's in the same situation with that built-in support system. In year two, so in September of '25, we anticipate that those first graders will become second graders. We'll offer a second first grade cohort, but that would be the first time that we would also offer a cohort in fifth grade at Baldwin. And then in year three, our first and second graders will become second and third graders. The fifth graders will become sixth graders. We will then offer another first grade cohort, another fifth grade cohort, and offer our first cohort at the high school. We don't anticipate that at any time would we be supporting a choice population that would be greater than 18 or 22 students, once we fully implement. And then again, remember, through the open choice program, we receive a dollar amount per student based on, on how many students attend. And so the state provides dollars based on the open choice enrollment to cover any costs that are associated with that. Transportation from New Haven to Guilford Public Schools and back is covered through ACES. There is no expense to Guilford Public Schools for the transportation, it's not part of our transportation contract.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of things. One of the takeaways from some of the communications that we've heard is that this is just going very, very fast. The first we hear of it is a month ago, and now all of a sudden, we're expected to vote on it. Is there, number one, is there any harm to waiting, say, another month before we do this? Because you just, because you did just say, we really have talked very little about this, except for that one workshop meeting. I know that a bunch of people have questions, including myself, which are easily answered, but that's, that's number one. Number two, we haven't heard from any teachers or the teachers' unions about the implementation if they feel prepared, right? Because we all talk about supporting our teachers, we want to make sure that that continues. And mostly that we haven't heard from Dr. Harrison about this either. So it's just a couple of pieces that, you know, I think this is a great program, and I think we're headed in this direction. It's just, it's going very fast. We haven't heard from some of these big stakeholders. And I just want to make sure that we are not just doing it, but doing it right. And so I would like to hear from those stakeholders.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And there would be no harm, again, I'm bringing this forward to you, and I'm making the recommendation to you tonight, you're under no obligation to act on a recommendation I make on the evening in which I make that recommendation. There would be no harm if the board acted on this in July or even August. Again, we're looking at a September of '24 implementation timeline. I can assure you that Dr. Harrison is fully in support of this and has been involved. I'd be happy to invite him to join you at, at your July meeting, and I'd be happy to extend an invitation to Mrs. Sullivan or some other teachers who could come and speak about, about the participation in the program. We've been talking about this since pre-pandemic. We, we put a big pin in it and stopped having that conversation and came back to it. And I know that at our last board meeting, we sort of, we, we wondered why nobody was speaking to us. So I really appreciate the questions and the emails that we've gotten since this meeting a month ago and tonight, because we were sort of wondering, where is the interest in this? So absolutely. So absolutely no harm in not taking action tonight, but I think this is a really important conversation that we're having here tonight.
And we've seen this before with, you know, in the public eye, where, you know, it always feels like it comes on at the last moment. So I think for that reason, you know...
I get how busy life gets. It's easy to miss what the Board of Ed is doing, absolutely.
I do want to kind of talk a little bit about the financial situation, you know, specific, not necessarily to Woodbridge, but in terms of reimbursement, especially as it pertains to special education. I believe the way that it's, New Haven is reimbursing is on a one-by-one basis for the para, is that correct? There's, I'm just trying to understand exactly how our method of education is with special education versus what New Haven is expecting from us, and how that might impact reimbursement.
You want me to start?
It's nice to see everybody.
Yes, thank you for being here.
I will say it was quite a treat to see George Wiley, who was in third grade when I started that.
That's awesome.
And now towers over me. So it was nice to see him and say hello as he left. So I think, the first thing I'll say, it's important, and I encourage you to make an informed and thoughtful decision. There are certain deadlines with open choice, but those deadlines aren't until, I think, January timeframe, when we ask school districts, "How many seats can you offer, and in which grade levels?". So that's just an important piece of this. I think the unfortunate thing is the financial disputes come about because of a vague word in the general statute, and that word is reasonable costs. That's the dispute, as I've understood it and done some research and talked with some of our Aces staff that deal with a number of different districts. And these disputes aren't unique to New Haven and Woodbridge, but in our agency, where we deal with a lot of districts, there's negotiations in what reasonable costs may be. I think that if there were different wordings, if that statute were tightened up a little bit, and I think districts have asked the state to tighten that up, and the State Department of Ed is, as of right now, you know, haven't moved on that. So my understanding is that if a child, if a student needs what would be considered above expected costs, or costs that are already provided by the district, like a one-on-one para, that New Haven would be responsible for that cost. So kind of above and beyond what would be considered kind of the baseline costs of educating a child, so.
I think, I've spoken to a number of superintendents, including the superintendent of Woodbridge, and what I have taken away from this most recent experience is that the communication upfront is the most important communication. So New Haven, and Aces, and Guilford would be sitting at any PPT meeting for any choice student who carried an IEP. It is going to be enormously important that at those meetings, as services are identified, that we determine who's responsible for which service. And that then will make this miscommunication much less likely to occur. Again, I want to reiterate that Woodbridge didn't withdraw from the program. They didn't enroll any new students this year while they were sorting this out. And as of this morning, the superintendent in Woodbridge told me that she is recommending that they enroll students next year. So I think, I think it was probably good for everybody that this happened, because everybody had this conversation. Again, I spoke to the superintendent in Cheshire, and he said that they have never experienced the confusion or the misunderstandings around the billing. Now, Cheshire's a much larger school district, and so I think that there are some things that, I think there's some efficiencies that come with scale that are more challenging for a small K-6 school district that is participating. But I know, Jason, you also spoke to a special ed director.
Yes, I spoke to the director in North Branford early this morning, reported nothing but positive experiences with regard to the program, have not encountered any financial negotiation issues with New Haven, or transportation being provided by Aces. It's all been a positive experience in North Branford. What I would add is that the planning and placement team, the IEP, is the structure with which we identify who and what services students receive. A representative from Guilford and a representative, as Dr. Freeman said, from New Haven would be present at that PPT to determine who is responsible for delivering those services. And so that would be the forum where we would discuss it. The other component that I'd just like to mention is that in North Branford, it was reported to me that they've only had one special ed identified student. It's an anonymous lottery system, and so it's, there is a component of, you know, who applies, you know, with what needs. And one year you might have three to four, some years you may have no special education students. So that's an N that we don't know. That's a number we don't know. But truly, the PPT would be the forum to discuss, you know, responsibility of service.
And then again, the start that we've designed, right, beginning with one cohort next year, remember that we report the available seats to Aces on an annual basis. So if in '24, we start with four or five students, and find out that we've got concerns about special ed billing, then we don't offer the next year's seats until we know that the relationship is in place, the capacity has been established, and it is a commitment, once the students are enrolled, it is a 12-year commitment to those students. But your annual opening, right, is an annual decision. And so again, I think Woodbridge was a good example. They didn't withdraw from the program. They didn't send students back to New Haven, but they did pause and didn't enroll any students this year until they clarified the relationship that they had with...
And Mr. Graham, are we seeing that with other districts? Where year after year, they're kind of reevaluating, bringing in students, and they might hit pause every few years or so?
Yeah, I think in the presentation back in April, you saw kind of the numbers over the history of open choice from 1998 forward, that there were kind of peaks and valleys, and districts do decide based on their own, either finances or capacity to support students, that they alter their numbers up or down year to year, so.
And a lot of that has to do with enrollment. A lot of that has to do...
I was going to say, we've had bubble classes before.
Yes, if a bubble class comes through, you will see a district not take any students that year, which doesn't necessarily mean a change in their commitment level, but again, they didn't have the capacity or the space in that school year, so they may not have enrolled students in that year.
My concern with the special education, you know, spending was being able to create equity within our, within our own district, and making sure that regardless of if it's a Guilford student or an open choice student, money was not the issue in terms of offering a Guilford education to them. So, I mean, hearing what you're saying, we're going to be talking about cost upfront before they're spent.
Well, Jason, you clarified that. That's a really important question. We do not talk about cost at PPT meetings when designing a student's IEP. Can you talk about the nuance that's involved there?
I just want to make sure we're never getting in a situation in which there's a disagreement on cost.
Right. The nuance is that we don't discuss funding at a PPT meeting, that we discuss the services that are required for a student to receive a free and appropriate public education. And so whatever that looks like, whether that be a paraprofessional, whether that be, you know, 30 minutes of articulation services, an hour a week of special education supports, that is a forum where we discuss that. What I can commit to, and what I shared with Dr. Freeman, is that myself or a representative from my office would be present for any and all PPTs, and reporting back to me, and I would report to Dr. Freeman, you know, the status of the services that we would be recommending for any of our students. But the commitment would be that they are Guilford Public School students at that point in time.
Are we able to pre-negotiate like an MOU or a contract with New Haven that defines reasonable? Or can the state do that somehow?
So this...
Just to avoid it altogether.
This exists under the broader umbrella of the open choice program, which is statewide, and there's three programs centered out of Hartford and New Haven, and then the Danbury area. And so I don't know, I mean, remember, we had legislation changed to allow us to participate in the New Haven program. I don't know that Aces or New Haven is going to want our participation so much that they will enter into an independent or sidebar contract with us beyond what exists in statute for open choice.
So I'll be honest, Aces won't get involved in the negotiation of the finances between Guilford and New Haven, or between New Haven and other districts. The state won't either. The state has chosen not to get involved in that piece. So again, it leaves it up to interpretation, right, that statute, and that word reasonable. So I think that if, if there's clear communication and clear decisions at the PPT when these, you know, when services are identified, that that would clear up, you know, what the, whose responsibility each of those services might entail.
If I can just add too, currently, we have Guilford students who attend magnet schools with IEPs and 504s. I attend all of those PPT meetings, 504 meetings, for any student identified. It's almost the reverse in open choice. But I can tell you that my relationship and the collaborative experience that I've had with the administrators and the staff in New Haven has been nothing short of a positive experience. They deliver the services we recommend with fidelity, they're collaborative, they're collegial, and so I would expect nothing less kind of going forward in the open choice program. It's just my experience and what I've seen with them.
And again, I want to be cautious. I appreciate being cautious in moving forward and talking about incidences like this one, but I want to be careful that we don't judge the whole program by the exception, and rather than the, remember, open choice has been in place for decades in the New Haven area. There's a bigger program running in the Hartford area, and we've all read one news story about a dispute. So, and I think it was good for everybody that the dispute became so public, because it helped clarify the process and how it should go. So I just want to be careful that we don't miss an opportunity in being overly, I want to be careful that we're not overly careful.
I think the special ed piece for me, because I am feeling better after all this discussion about that one specific incident, but I do feel in doing our due diligence and really, you know, considering everything, that one of the pieces that I would love to have is just kind of like a temperature check currently within Guilford of where we are. Because I know a lot of the decision is driven purely by class size, but would any of that decision be also informed by where we're at within people's surfaces, what current caseloads are sitting at? I know the intention is not to hire, but, you know, there's recommendations for caseloads for ABA and BCPAs and, you know, those kind of programs, so I just would like to get a better sense of kind of, not on the spot right now, but where we're at.
But the quick answer is a qualified yes. So when we are identifying space available, we won't just be looking at numbers. We will also be looking at the complexity, and again, it's another reason for not offering kindergarten seats but holding a year. That being said, two things. The, we don't know who will access the seats once we make the seats available. So next year, let's assume that we make five seats available. It goes through a lottery process in New Haven with all of the districts that participate. We might get five students and have no students with special needs. We might get two students with special needs. We could, we could get all five, that, right? That's just not foreseeable. And then, we all know that students' needs change and evolve and ebb and flow over 12 years with us. And so if we enrolled five students, none of whom carried an IEP on the day they joined us, that doesn't mean that two or three won't have IEPs before they graduate. And so, yes, when we, when we are deciding capacity and space available, we wouldn't say, "This school has two really small kindergartens, but the special ed staff is overburdened with caseloads, and so we're going to throw them in". No, the whole picture will be looked at. Jason will be part of sitting with me when we look at capacity. And the principals in those schools will be consulted before the seats are made available as well. So if it is the January due date, and Jason and I are saying to a principal, "Looks to me like you've got three or four seats available", that principal will have the opportunity to say, "This is a really complicated bunch. Have you thought about this, and this, and this?". And all of that will be taken into consideration before we extend an invite to somebody who then might become our Guilford student for the next 12 years. That's a really important question. Thank you.
And I want to be cautious in characterizing open choice students as those that are in need of special support services.
Yes.
Because I know that as an elementary principal, all kindergarten students need, have needs, first graders have needs, right? Students that come in, that move into district may have needs, that it's the job of the schools to provide that support, that a student who enters first grade from another district or from another town would go through the normal process of support services and intervention and tiered support, so, before you would ever get to a PPT.
Yes.
So I think that, you know, that's just the normal process that would take place.
And in fact, we know how to do this, because every time a new family moves to the community, we go through this process. And so we do know, we do know how to do this.
And as Mr. Graham said, all students would enter through the tiered system of intervention through SRBI. They would receive tier one instructional support. If those are successful, then they would continue to receive those for a period of time. They would then progress through tier two and tier three, which is higher levels of frequency, duration, and intensity of intervention prior to a PPT. That is if students come in to us from New Haven with, who are not identified. I think it's important to name that we don't identify students of color as special education without doing our due diligence. There is, there is tracking of data throughout the state that shows that there's an over-identification statewide of students, of male black students as emotionally disabled. And so I think it's very important that we consider how we're talking about not only special education students, but special education students of color as well. I think it's just an important caution to note.
Were there other, other questions, comments that any of the colleagues had?
While it's, you know, while we've had this discussion, you know, to your point, a couple months now, and prior to that, years ago, I mean, from the public persona, I can understand, you know, that it, you know, it feels like it's coming on, you know, quick. You know, with that, I think we've outlined a few opportunities to be able to, you know, maybe have an agenda, focus more on special education load, you know, internally. Rydell's comments on open choice. Is there anything else? Oh, the teachers. The teachers. You know, in an effort to just seek any further clarification, and really, we're not, you know, to your point, we're very early to the game, so.
There's no rush. This is not a decision that needs to be made tonight, and I have really appreciated this conversation and look forward to continuing it in July.
So then, if no one else has additional comments?
I would just like to invite the public to comment. I feel like we've heard very little from the Guilford community and from parents of Guilford students. Like, we've really received, I think, less than half a dozen communications about this, and it's a big decision. Like, I would really love to hear more from the community if people are willing to participate and give us some information about how they feel about the program.
Yeah, I know a number of the people reached out, said that they had, I think there was open houses, I think Baldwin to Adams, maybe. There was different things going on tonight where they just weren't able to come, and so that's why they really emailed us. Yeah, so, you know, maybe once we're out and we have a meeting, more people who have concerns or questions.
Even shooting us emails, yeah, that'd be great.
People have not hesitated on other topics to tell you, this board, what they think, whether that should be voted up or voted down. I would encourage people, absolutely, even if it's just an email to say, "I think it's a great idea, and you should be moving forward." Or, like tonight, "I've got some questions, and can you spend more time talking about them?". Both of those would be enormously helpful as you face this again in July. I will be making the same recommendation in July. I believe that this is a good program that will be good for Guilford and New Haven students who participate in it, and I am recommending it to you, and will spend as much time running down answers and bringing guests to board meetings to continue the conversation, to continue making that recommendation. And Mr. Graham, I hope you're not traveling, we'll invite you back in July.
We just want to get you back.
Yeah, I don't miss board meetings. I'm here to provide support, so.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, as Dr. Freeman said, this came up four years ago for the first time. I think the board started talking about it. I think it's something that we've been interested in for a long time, but I appreciate wanting to make sure we have questions answered before... But I appreciate wanting to make sure we have questions answered before we put the final go-ahead.
And I appreciate the fact that people recognize that it is not a quick fix or a panacea, right? This is not an easy thing that you do with the stroke of a pen. And so, again, I really appreciate this conversation and look forward to continuing it.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that we're making this decision now so that administration, administrators, staff can spend the next year thoughtfully, carefully planning so that we can make this the best experience for all involved.
And I appreciate that. And to be really clear, even should this board choose not to move forward with open choice, we will still spend next year working on creating safe and brave classrooms in which every student knows and feels that they belong every single day, right? These two, the conversation of the last three or four years, the work of this year, the plan for next year dovetails really well with open choice. And open choice fits into that. But it is not reliant, should we choose not to move forward for any reason, we will continue to focus on creating those classroom environments that I went on about at some length as we begin this conversation.
So how do we do a motion to table? How do we?
Just don't vote.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can just determine that we're going to put that act on, part of this on pause, move it to July meeting.
Unless somebody moves to vote on it right now, it just carries over to the next meeting if we.
Yes.
So to me, it feels a little bit like we're kicking the can. I think that we can agree that open choice is something that we, as a board, support fundamentally.
Yes.
And especially from a principal standpoint.
Yes.
And I, what I think is these are peripheral concerns that we know that our administration can handle, especially with upfront negotiations. You know, but I just want to make it clear that I am going to support this, and I hope that we, as a board, move forward with it.
Thank you. I concur with that sentiment as well. I have heard, so I've heard a request, though, to pause for a month. Is that a sense that I'm hearing from several, I'm seeing several nods?
Is that with the hope or assumption, Paul, that that's enough time for you to prepare some of these?
Yes. Yep, we will come back in July ready to continue this conversation. I'll do everything I can to secure Dr. Harrison. If he's unavailable on that specific date, then I will reach out to the board and try to schedule a special meeting to do that, which is also public, so that it works. Again, we need, we just need to remember that we own a very small part of his time. And so I will, we'll begin that first thing tomorrow morning, seeing if we can secure him for that standing time, and if not, we'll find a time.
Thank you.
All right. Any other set? Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, both.
Thank you. 9.6 is a recommendation from the policy committee.
No, but I'll do the high level.
Okay, so we've had several opportunities to review policy 5134, which is regarding non-resident students. This is, we are post, we're, I'm asking everyone to take action tonight on an addition to the existing policy. The addition is for tuition and fees for children of non-resident certified staff. So this addition would allow certified staff who live out of district to bring their kids here if there's room for their kids in a particular grade. It would be on a tiered scale of payment, so the staff members would wind up paying a tuition fee to come here. Zero to five years of service to the Guilford Public Schools, the staff member would be charged at 50% of the most current per pupil cost. Five to 10 years, the staff member would be charged at 25%. And 10 or more years, the staff member would be charged 10% of that rate. The tuition payments can be made as a payroll deduction, and if special education services are required, the staff member shall be charged those additional costs. So we've had, I think, plenty of time to review this. I don't know if everyone's comfortable at this point taking action on this addition to the policy.
And this is something that happens in a lot of other districts across the state as well, I know.
Correct. It is a common benefit seen across the state in a number of districts, and I think that it is particularly timely considering the hiring challenges. This is very much going to be a retention and, sorry, a recruitment and a retention tool for us. It's really going to benefit us in holding on to qualified and talented teachers. Madison is the closest example of a district who has a similar policy in place.
So any clarifying questions? Sorry to break you down now. Just in terms of how the years of service are, is there a cumulative summation if it's more than two spouses in the district or?
No. The time, no, it would be the spouse with the most senior, yes, with the most senior. Yep, you don't get to add it up.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve updates to policy 5134, non-resident students.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. That's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of work that's gone into that and a lot of patience that has gone into that. Thank you.
All right, up to reports of committees. Policy committee, do you have anything to report?
No, we meet in two weeks.
Excellent. Operations committee, anything in addition to report?
I think so. A few updates. Dining services reported that we are in a very healthy position. Still waiting from a state level, just exactly where we are with free and reduced lunches and breakfasts for next year. Budget has passed. There are funds allocated. We just don't know what the distribution's going to be yet. As mentioned, we did receive our excess cost grant, received at 73.7, but well within our budget. Thank you very much. And then on the facilities side, district-wide security enhancements are going to be taking place throughout the summer in every school. Baldwin kitchen renovations are starting next week as we leave the building. Cox Media Library renovations will take place as well over the summer. And our tennis courts here at the high school, bids have been received and approved and looking forward to moving forward and looking forward to moving that project forward starting as soon as possible. And for those that have been asking, there will be two pickleball courts that are going to be lined. I believe it's five and six. Other than that, that facilities team is going to be very, very busy this summer.
With a reminder that those pickleball courts will be available for community use outside of school hours, but the high school tennis courts during school hours unfortunately are not available to the community.
Right, thank you very much. Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee, anything to report?
We met a few weeks ago. Dr. Goss led us in a conversation about the various summative assessments of learning that we use and going forward, some new kinds of assessments. She told us about the dual enrollment grant opportunities where students will have a chance to duly enroll for college credit or particular vogue education programs. And then we discussed the current state of our instructional coaching program and how that might get reiterated, given that we've heard needs about that program.
Excellent. Any reports from liaisons to town committees?
No.
All right, and nothing from the one board of districts. All right, we are back up to public questions for the board. Ms. Carpolino, did you want to come finish your public comment? And then if there are others that want to address the board in public comment, you are welcome to do so. Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, so to just finish up where I originally started. Paul Freeman is quoted as saying, "We are not willing, however, to serve as moral monitors of whether some materials within our diverse literary collection may be deemed inappropriate in the eyes of some." And then according to Kathleen Balistraci, "The Guilford school system is unlikely to ban any titles and would not cater to a growing trend in other states and districts that are choosing to remove certain books from circulation in their school libraries." This seems to stand in stark contrast to what actually occurred back in 2021 with the removal of those seven books. So I ask you to, I asked you through email to investigate this and to put it into the agenda so we could have a public conversation about it. I'm asking you again to do that. I can even provide everything I've listed here because, in my opinion, this does look like censorship, which is a violation of the First Amendment.
And for the viewing public, my response to you was that I did have conversation and look into it. These were books that were taken off the shelves of one of our elementary schools. They exist on other shelves in other elementary schools. Each of our librarians are tasked with making a whole host of decisions around circulation, and I did not feel that there was any reason to have a public discussion about because no violation had occurred.
So there's no explanation, you don't need an explanation for why seven books?
You were given, you were given an explanation by Dr. Freeman.
No, actually. No, I wasn't. I never received an explanation from Dr. Freeman.
He sent you an email. I was copied on it. So yes, there's, again, that books are removed in circulation for reasons.
Yeah, he gave an explanation and I countered every single reason. So they weren't damaged, their circulation numbers were not low, there was not one single request for reconsideration, there was not one public outrage documented, there was absolutely no legitimate reason that Paul gave for why a librarian would remove books off the shelves on the same day. There was not one of those reasons. We discovered that through Freedom of Information Act.
And I'm telling you that I investigated it and no violation occurred, so that we're not going to have a discussion now about something that's not a violation.
Okay, so it may not be a violation in your terms, but according to, according to the Supreme Court, you cannot remove books.
There was no violation per the Supreme Court. I can talk to you about this more if you would like.
So books were removed, and that's not considered censoring?
Books are removed from our shelves every day or every week or every year by librarians who are assessing their collections, they're bringing new books in, they're looking at circulation numbers, they're considering what their students are reading, they're making sure that they're making them, making available to their students books that are relevant to the curriculum that year, to different projects that teachers want to do. It is the professional librarian of each of our schools to have the ability to make those decisions. We do not micromanage those decisions. We have the books that you've named in some of our schools. We don't have them in others. This was no systematic attempt to make any decision that way. Individual librarians are making those choices.
So it's just a coincidence that these seven books were also nationally publicized for being considered racist?
Individual librarians are making decisions that are best for their, that's the answer that I'm giving you, Ms. Carpolino, is the answer you've been given.
So you can't get a specific answer?
I'm telling you that it has been looked at, no violation has occurred, and this discussion is over for right now.
Those are non-answers, Kathleen, for the record. I mean, it's on tape. You didn't answer the question. There's no reason why the books were, there was no reason given, not one legitimate reason given. They were just removed, so. And you're saying that that's okay with you? That's why?
I'm saying that I trust our professional librarians and the job that they do and in the decisions they make. And since, nothing was in violation of things that are, librarians are professionally expected to do in the way they're expected to make their decisions.
Okay, so she removed those books for her own personal reasons?
The conversation is over, Ms. Carpolino. I've answered the question.
Oh, that's fascinating that you're shutting the conversation down, Kathleen.
We're at four and a half minutes.
That's fine, but you interjected, and you interjected into my four minutes.
So. Which I gave you more.
Okay, thank you. So you're shutting the conversation down. It seems like you're shutting the conversation down because you know it's not going to go anywhere that, in the direction you'd like it to go.
I'm shutting the conversation down because I've given you my final answer.
And your final answer is not an answer, it's a non-answer.
This conversation is over.
Yeah, of course it is.
Does someone else like to speak?
I'm not, I have, I haven't even begun. You spoke with the audience.
You just missed the last four minutes. Your time is over. Someone else is welcome to come to the podium.
Does anybody else want to talk?
I'd like to say one name.
Okay.
Deborah Denisius, 18 Sugarloaf Road. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but something has bothered me for the last probably couple of months. I heard a disturbing recount of a parent who had a nine-year-old student in one of our elementary schools. And the teacher had given, I guess, what you might call a health lesson, and I don't think there was transparency before this health lesson was given. During this health lesson, male students were explicitly taught and described how to receive pleasure. And this student came home that evening very disturbed.
Can I, I'm just going to ask you.
Any parent with that concern should contact a principal.
This is a matter where the parent involved should contact the school principal? This is not a board issue.
No, I believe that the parent did, but what I'm saying is that a nine-year-old boy, for a teacher to be teaching a lesson that should be spoken between a parent and a student and not being taught in a third or fourth grade classroom.
This is an issue that should be dealt with first with the principal?
And I'm sure it was.
So then it is not an issue for the Board of Education to monitor?
Why is it not an issue if your curriculum is to that effect? Is to be teaching gender fluidity and so on?
I understand, yes, I understand.
To our children. You have no right to be teaching that without sub notice to a parent.
The issue should be dealt with with the principal?
Well, I don't think this is the first time, and I don't think it was the last, will be the last.
That parent can then come to the administration and address it with them again.
And I'm sure they did, and their student is no longer here. And so you, I'm grateful that parents and people are moving to Guilford for our school system, but there are also people that I know two of just recently who have left our school system.
This is hearsay.
It is not hearsay.
Yes, it is. If it didn't happen to you, it is hearsay?
No, no, no. My granddaughter goes to a school that these students now attend. It is not hearsay.
Then I'm going to ask.
I am paying, my husband and I are helping our daughter pay quite a bit of money to send our eight-year-old granddaughter to another school system when I was thrilled and happy to send my three children to this system because what we are afraid that our grandchild might get and what might hear in the classrooms of the Guilford school system. You should be ashamed. You really should. You all want to talk about having parent, parental or taxpayer input. When we give our input, you close your ears if it's not going along with what you believe is what should be taught. You're not willing to hear the opposite point of view, the minority view is what you call it, because when Mr. Freeman sends out a letter to garner support like he did with the book banning issue, when not one of those people asked to have books banned.
Would someone else like to address the board?
Bill Misano, 60 Jefferson Drive. First of all, I think Ms. Carpolino, who's been picked on a little bit, deserves recognition for basically restarting what was stalled open choice program. Dr. Freeman's well aware, we shared all the emails, and she put in a tremendous amount of work to get this dialogue restarted and to convey that information to Dr. Freeman. So I'd like to recognize her for all that work and seeing it come to fruition tonight. Okay, nobody wants to acknowledge it? Fine. Okay, I do have more good news for you. Took a year and a half, almost a year and a half, but finally a FOIA request was filled. The town of Guilford tried for quite a while to not release the information. Fortunately, in arbitration, we were able to get it. It goes back to 2019. Many of you were not here in 2019. But it's fascinating. I would be happy to share it with those of you who weren't here. It's got teachers' workshops, materials. I think you might find it a very eye-opening experience. I'm going to look for the proper venue to share it with the community, but if you would like to look at it, I would be happy to share the details with you. It does kind of vindicate all the people who talked about what was being put into the curriculum. Dr. Freeman was correct. The curriculum was not changed, no name was changed, but that didn't change the implementation or the instruction of the teachers. And I have it all documented if you are interested to look. And to all you people in the community who would be interested, I will be happy to share it. I will share it with the Courier or any other outlets that are interested in it. So, but that does go back before you were here in 2019. Stuff we were aware of, but now it's been pretty much shown to be true. So I'll just leave you with that. It's good news. Thank you.
Tim, Chairwoman, 107 Do. Sorry. Tim, Chairwoman, 107 Do, D O H M. Three things, none of them are going to hurt, I promise. One, you mentioned earlier that the debate over women's voting is closed. And I think you're right. Largely, there's not debate about that. But there's a reason there's not debate about it. It's because people used to know the reason why women didn't have the right to vote. And it changed for a reason. And now there's no discussion about it. And when you don't discuss things, that reasoning gets lost. And so I think it's still important to have a reasoned discussion about why people didn't think women should have the right to vote. And it's important to know the logic behind that and know why that logic changed. So I actually had that discussion this week with somebody as to why that was the case. Dr. Hirsch, you mentioned that it was one person that brought all the complaints.
I asked the question.
He mentioned, you asked it, but my, I do have concern about that, that you would assume then that it's only one person being concerned regarding that. And it seems like that's a way to excuse the whole discussion as one crazy. And that seemed to be what your intent was, and I would warn you against doing that, in that there were many people who did disagree with having those books on the shelves. But knowing that one person had already filed, rather than go through all the paperwork again and make you read all the paperwork again, someone's decided one example was enough.
Excuse me. You have misrepresented what I said.
I didn't mean to.
I asked the question.
Yep.
Was the request for the, for the books, first look at the books, how many people were asking that? I didn't, I didn't imply that it was one person at all. Dr. Freeman responded that it was one person.
I'm just saying, just because there's one request doesn't mean only one person has that in mind.
That wasn't my point.
Okay, I just want to make that very clear. I'm not trying to, like I said, I'm trying to be cordial today. Also, regarding choice, I believe that moving closer to a system where, where money follows a student and where there's more choice, I'd love to see that more broadly engaged, where my kids could choose to go to a different school if they want to. I think that's a great system. I encourage you to embrace a system where there is greater freedom of choice.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to address the board?
I just wanted to.
Any else?
Good evening. Madeline Vences, Little Meadow Road. I find it comical that we're taking Dr. Seuss off shelves, but yet we have books that use four-letter words, very descriptive, and things that I never would ever imagine a child learning in grade school or even high school. I find no reason for books to use a four-letter word 90 times in one chapter. I, I am puzzled by why these books would even be out here. And if you tell a kid there's a book with dirty words in it, their first object is going to be to find that book. Because I remember when I was in school, when National Geographic came out, all the boys were in the library looking at National Geographic. Why is there a need for these kind of books? I'm just puzzled by it. I don't understand what the value is, and I think if a child has to learn about pleasuring himself, his father or his big brother should be teaching him, not in a classroom. And for this child to be so upset by it that their parent pulls him out, I just can't get my head around that. I know I'm old-fashioned, I'm a dinosaur, however, I don't think this needs to be taught in grammar school. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right.
So I won't get a chance to finish, courtesy?
Ms. Garpolino, you've come and talked to us twice. What, I'm not sure.
The majority, what I wanted to say was, was left out you, and I've been turned back and forth, so.
What?
We have our time limits.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Why do we have time limits if we don't enforce them? I don't understand.
Tell me how long I have now? Just so, is it another four minutes? Is it a minute?
It would be another three minutes.
Another three minutes, please.
Thank you. Sorry, you seem bothered by this.
Ms. Garpolino, please just go ahead and take your time. We've given you about seven minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm just pointing out what I'm witnessing, my experience, my life's experience.
Please go ahead.
You seem a little frustrated.
Please just go ahead.
Okay.
Professional behavior would be, would be really appreciated.
Yes.
From both. Okay, so, Mr. Freeman, you, you left out a book in your letter. You mentioned Only Flamer and, I think, Lawn Boy, but there was another book that was read, Me, Earl and the Dying Girl, and that book was actually in seventh and eighth grade. And just to refresh your memory, do you know how to eat pussy? Papa Gaines never sat you down, son. One day, you're going to have to eat pussy. I can go on and on. So I don't have time for that. I got like 20 pussies over here that I need to eat. This is seventh and eighth grade. And I just find it fascinating that in your letter, you left that one book out. It was read, and it was in seventh and eighth grade, but you brag and you boast about how these books are only in high school. The books that are no longer in the schools. I'll hunt in the mountains of Zumba Matant while helpers who all wear their eyes at a slant. Gone, banned.
Sorry, these are still in schools?
Not in Melissa Jones.
Okay, just clarify.
Yeah, Melissa Jones families and their children can't have assignments on this, they can't take the book out. Parents weren't given, like Paul suggested, parents take control. Parents decide which books their children should read. Parents don't have that choice in Melissa Jones. Schools that you support and endorse and are, have said repeatedly that you will not consider removing because of some national conversation. And by the way, this is a book that was assigned to Guilford students, not mandated. In fact, the teacher said they did not have to read this book in order to pass this class with an A. This was a strictly Guilford Public School chosen book. It's called The Bluest Eye. An adolescent had to read it. This is a story about a father raping his 11-year-old daughter. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg. His mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat, was better than Pauline's easy laughter had been. Pauline is his wife. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and the doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bolt of forbidden thing desire ran down his genitals, giving it length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of the lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to fuck her. This is a father.
Ms. Garpolino, we're at three minutes.
Okay. He wanted to fuck her, his 11-year-old daughter.
Excuse me.
We're at three minutes.
We're at three minutes.
Okay. So my point is, this is what you support, this is what you endorse.
That is in an AP English class in which parents are told that adult things.
They're not told that there's a.
We will discuss this text in September. I don't believe we should be continuing this back and forth. I apologize, Dr. Freeman.
Excuse me, I can't hear anything anyone's saying. I didn't hear anything anyone's saying.
This is one of the five books that was requested for reconsideration. We will be reviewing the books over the summer and discussing them in September.
Okay, so just for the record, this was assigned, and it was not mandated by AP. They do not mandate books. The teachers in the schools pick the books for AP courses, period.
We will be discussing that in September.
Great, I'm glad you will. And I just really think that you should consider the books that are missing and the books that still are in the library. And I think if you have integrity, you'll understand why I'm here, fighting this behavior, fighting this rude behavior.
You're done. So I think, I'm not the only one who's done, Ms. Ballistraci. I'm not the only one who's. Well, no, no, we have.
We have an executive session.
To go into executive session. All those in favor? Aye. So for the viewing public, we have a scheduled executive session on the superintendent's evaluation. We will go into executive session. When we come out of executive session, there's not going to be any further discussion, nor there will there be any vote. We will simply be adjourning the meeting. And so, that's it?
We'll meet in the back.
We'll meet in the back. Thank you.